Cabinet of this council term, held today in our council chamber as you can see. Now, we are socially distanced and I would ask you please to wear your face coverings when you are not seated. We are live streaming the meeting on YouTube and a recording of the meeting will also be available afterwards. We are also audio broadcasting the meeting. Again, a recording will be available on the council's website. Now, we're not expecting a fire drill this morning, so if the alarm does sound, please follow the officers out of the building and gather in the cathedral grounds. Now, because we are audio broadcasting and also YouTube as well, and we are in different surroundings, I'm going to ask each of the cabinet members to introduce themselves, and including we have a deputy cabinet member to introduce themselves, followed by leaders of the opposition, and then the chief executive. And if any other member wishes to speak later, please identify yourselves before you speak, so any of our residents who are watching knows who they are and who's asking what. So I'll start with myself. I am councillor Kevin Bentley. The leader of the county council. Behind me sits the deputy leader, and from there we'll go round the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Louise McKinley, deputy leader of Essex County Council and cabinet member for community, equalities, partnership and performance.
Councillor Lee Scott, cabinet member for highways, maintenance and sustainable transport.
Thank you, councillor Chris Whitbread, cabinet member for finance and corporate services.
Councillor Beverley Egan, cabinet member for children's services and early years.
Councillor Lesley Wagland, the cabinet member for economic renewal, infrastructure and planning.
Councillor Malcolm Buckley, cabinet member for waste reduction and recycling.
Councillor Tony Ball, cabinet member for education, excellence, skills and training.
Councillor Graham Butler, cabinet member for devolution, the arts, heritage and culture.
Councillor Mark Durham, deputy cabinet member for devolution, the arts, heritage and culture.
Chris Pond, leader of the non-aligned group and leader of the opposition.
David King, deputy group leader for Liberal Democrats.
Councillor Ivan Henderson, leader of the Labour group.
Councillor Peter Schreer, deputy cabinet member to the leader with special responsibility for climate action.
Good morning. Gavin Jones, chief executive.
Thank you, colleagues. We're all getting used to the buttons again after a year away, and don't forget if someone's speaking, you happen to lean on the button, it does turn the microphone off. So you do have great power when someone's speaking, by the way, to switch them off. And again, now that a member wishes to speak, please identify yourselves at the time of asking the questions. We'll move on to item one on the agenda, which is the membership, which you've just heard. I have two apologies, one from councillor Spence, who's the cabinet member for adult social care, and councillor Recorrie, who's the leader of the Liberal Democrats, but very welcome to councillor Dave King, who is here as the deputy leader of the Liberal Democrat Group. May I ask colleagues if they have any declarations of interest, which you can declare now or as they may arise through the course of the meeting? I see or hear none. So we move on to the minutes of the previous meeting, which were held, which have been circulated. Are there any comments around those, or are you happy to approve them, cabinet colleagues? No? Are we agreed? Agreed? A little, once more for volume, are we agreed? Well done, well done, excellent. I'm not aware there's any questions from the public? Good. In which case we'll move then on to the main item and the only item on the agenda, the report, but a very important report as well, which I'm going to introduce. I will invite members of the council, but also leaders of the opposition groups, to raise a point. Ah, sorry, councillor Henderson, I didn't see you.
I have four questions, if that's okay, leader, on this item.
No problem. What I thought we'd do is we'd present the papers first and then come to your questions afterwards, if that's all right, if everyone's happy with that. But of course, and since you're registered first, we'll come to you first, don't worry, that's okay. So what I'd like to do is introduce the paper, and I know that colleagues of mine in the cabinet would also like to address certain aspects of the paper. This would be normally councillor Spence, who, he and his colleagues have done an awful lot of hard work around this, but also with other officers and other cabinet members as well. And you all know this is about the Container Outbreak Management Fund, known as COMF, which is the money the government has given to us as a local authority, but generally around the country as well, to help with those who have had difficulties during the pandemic. And this is particularly around social care and health, but in other areas as well, particularly around business, et cetera. And this is our chance now to use that money to help organisations through the county to make sure that we come out of the pandemic and we're able to help them while we're in it, but also as we recover as well, which is hugely important. Now, it's already, I won't go through the entire paper, because I think actually the paper is laid out extremely well, and I think it explains very clearly where the money's being allocated and why it's being allocated. I would just say that already the council's allocated £27.5 million of the money we've received so far to activities that help our communities and businesses. And the grant scheme we are proposing here will also obviously help with further work to do with the Covid outbreak and those people who have had difficulties through that particular period of time. So this paper lays out the plans over the £30 million to be spent during the 2122 financial year, and we will continue to prioritise this money to ensure that those who need it the most are able to obtain it as well. And this is for our communities, our businesses and particularly vulnerable groups, to make sure they receive the money and actually to use it in order to help recover and help them during these particularly difficult times. Now, that's all I want to say by way of introduction. I know other colleagues wish to comment as well, and I know my colleague, the deputy leader, who's doing a lot of work with families, would like to comment on it as well.
Thank you, leader. Just to begin by echoing your comments around the extent of the work that has been done to date, and also just how far these proposals go in terms of continuing that work. Members will be aware that over the course of the past year, various pots of money at different times have been released to support community groups, particularly around the provision of some of the holiday camps, the free school meals, clothes for vulnerable families, support for Home Start, support for the grassroots organisations, and crucially for our partner organisations, very much run by volunteers like the likes of the CAB and others. And that work has been absolutely unprecedented, as we would have expected it to be, and has been crucial to the wellbeing of families during these really difficult times. And as I think we would all expect, that during a global pandemic, when we are effectively closing down parts of the economy for very obvious and valid reasons, that that additional support has been in place. And the proposals today, I think, are a further extension of that support, and also as we hopefully start to move into a more open world, that the money will continue to support those areas that need it most, but also to help us open up the economy and open up society in a safe way. I just wanted to close on two points. I'm really pleased to see that there's the £2.3 million that's being held back, just in case of a third wave. We know that we're not out of the woods yet, it's all looking positive, and I think, you know, we can all be optimistic, but we are not there yet, and we know what that money meant for families, particularly during the winter months. So to hold that back, I think, is absolutely the right thing. And secondly, I just wanted to put on record our thanks, my personal thanks, to the EALC, who have worked very closely with us over the past year to distribute some of the money, particularly with some of the food support groups, where they've really managed to get the money turned around quickly and out there in the communities, so that people who need that extra help there and then can access it immediately. So my thanks go to them. So I think this is a very comprehensive paper, it lays out exactly where the funding will go, and I think that it's a good continuation of the work that we do, as we hopefully start to open up in the coming weeks and months. Thank you.
Councillor McKinley, thank you very much indeed, and with the thanks, I would also like to echo that, but also include our district colleagues as well, particularly on the business grants, where they were handled is in first class, I think, and we should recognise that here. I think councillor Butler wanted to comment.
Thank you, Chair. I'm particularly grateful, for a second time, for the extra funding to support tourism in Essex. Clearly that is going to be a major part of the recovery. And in paragraph 3.4.2, the £2.5 million there, that will help to make our tourist areas safe this summer, for as many visitors as possible to come, our country parks and our areas like Cressing Temple Barns, but also particularly as well, I would draw attention to the £1.5 million that we're going to make available to our district borough and city councils to fund measures in their area. And I look forward to working very closely with those other local authorities, this is very much a team effort as to how we can get tourism going. And there's one other point, leader, which I would just like to draw attention to, and that's 3.4.9, and that's a relatively small sum, but actually a very important sum, of £50,000, to deliver Covid-19 communication strategy with our gypsy and traveller communities. We'll be working very closely with representatives of those communities to see how best we can support them, to encourage vaccination, take up and testing, and also the key messages around hands, face and space. So from the view of my portfolio, I'm particularly grateful for those allocations of additional resources.
Councillor Butler, thank you very much indeed. Councillor Ball.
Thank you, Chairman, and just if I may completely agree with councillor McKinley's and councillor Butler's points that they made, I'd like to focus on perhaps my previous portfolio, if I may, and I have councillor Wagland's permission to do so, and welcome the increase in the grants, the adaptation grants, to be devolved to the districts, and the increase in the cap from £1,500 to £5,000, and obviously there's an extra £5 million available for the district. I'd like to thank the districts for their work, along with the officers from Essex, in managing to distribute the grants so far. It can only be done by collaboration, as has been mentioned. The offer, or the districts helping each other out, has been something which I've been very pleased to see and hope that will continue, but also the offer from Essex officers, if districts are struggling with capacity or whatever, that that continue. And if councillor Egan will forgive me, I'd just like to again to welcome the £508,000 for early years setting, something that has been exercising us about how we could help that sector. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Ball. And finally, I'd like to go to councillor Whitbread, because it all comes down to money, and we shouldn't forget our finance colleagues who are making this possible, and they're of course led politically by councillor Whitbread.
Thank you, leader. Obviously, like all my colleagues, I welcome this report and I echo their thoughts around it. In particular, I'm glad that the leader has just mentioned the efforts of our staff, which have been phenomenal in delivering this, along with our partners across the county. So I think we should all be glad for what's been done on that basis. From my point of view, obviously I have to look at it as financially, and £13 million alongside the other £27 million that's already gone, is a large sum of public money, and of course this is restricted to a degree. And I just wanted to reassure members that we have tested these offers to make sure that the grant conditions can be met, as there is restrictions involved. Most importantly, we must spend this money by the 31st of March 2022. So we've tested to make sure that the schemes are fully mobilised and deliverable, I think that's fundamental. And of course, a few of the schemes will involve direct payments of grants to third parties, so we've also ensured these as well with the appropriate section 151 sign offset as required. So from a financial point of view, we've done all the right things to make sure public money is well spent and spent on time for the benefit of the people of Essex. Thank you, leader.
Councillor Whitbread, thank you very much indeed. Right, we now move on to questions. I know we've got councillor Henderson first, if you wish to ask a question, can you please just raise your hand? Councillor King, councillor Pond, anyone else at the moment? No? Great, councillor Henderson.
Thank you, leader, and I too welcome this additional funding, and I also welcome the recognition and the work that has gone into this by officers to make sure that there's a really good spread of support across the whole of Essex and of organisations and businesses who are in desperate need of this support. My first question, leader, is what additional support can be given to those organisations which are overstretched at the moment, and this is a bidding process, and some of them do find it quite hard to actually have the resources and the time to put these together? So that's the first question. Is there anything out there, any phone numbers, any contacts, these organisations can make to help them, assist them put these bids together? Because what we don't want to see is any organisation which does need this help lose out. My next question is, one of the big issues going ahead on the coming months is going to be community transport. We know the pressure which is on the NHS at the moment, and the increase of appointments and surgeries or whatever, which is needed in those hospitals. A lot of people are going to need extra support to those hospitals, so can we make sure that some of that money goes to those community transport organisations who operate hospital hoppers and various other transport to hospitals? The other one, I wonder if the portfolio holder could mention something about the new, because I think this is a really good scheme, very exciting scheme, is the Central Law Group, which has been set up, I understand with Chelmsford CAB, to assist people who may not be able to afford legal fees at the moment, particularly on perhaps employment issues, where employers are perhaps not being as helpful and supportive to their employers as they could be. Some of these people may not be in a trade union, they could be in need of that extra support. I understand it's possibly free and possibly a contribucional service. And finally, could I ask that we have regular updates on how the money's being distributed to make sure that the money is being distributed fairly and equally across the whole of the county? Thank you. Thank you, leader.
Councillor Henderson, thank you very much indeed. I'll do my very best to answer a lot of these. It is councillor Spence's paper, but I think I can manage it, and if you feel you want more, of course, then I'd encourage you to write to councillor Spence if you want more detail than I'm giving you. So help with the resources is very, very important, and we're working through the CBS and other organisations as well to make sure that as part of the grant giving, support is given to those organisations that find it difficult and resourcing as well. And a lot of this is done through outreach work, through digital work, in a very sort of peripatetic way. I think that's hugely important, we understand that, because no one should be left behind and no one should find a struggle. Making sure people know about this in the first place is also very important. So I think we all have a role to play as county councillors here, to make sure we're telling our constituents and telling our businesses that they exist. I will look to see whether we can provide more marketing tools around that, because it's a very good point, but again, we are working through agencies to make sure that happens. If you feel any organisation, both you, councillor Henderson, but anybody else feels they need extra support, then please let us know, please write to us, and we can make sure that additional support is targeted that way. No one left behind, hugely important. Community transport, that's already underway, so we have already been working with C360 and also Uthelsford, I believe, for community transport, to make sure that community transport schemes are there and are able to bid into this. Again, if you have local knowledge where you think people can't, or could, or should, but unable to bid in, then let us know and we can assist them as well. No one left behind. The Central Law Group, I don't know about that, to be honest with you, so I'll go away and find the answer to that, make sure that I write to you and let you know, but also circulate that to all members so they're aware, and absolutely on regular updates. You know my background, I believe communication is one of the most important things we do, and making sure all our members are briefed as well as the public. So where we can, unless there's any particular reason we can't give details, we should make sure that we are telling people, the public, where their taxpayer money's being spent and the benefits that are derived from that as well. People pointed behind me, so there's difficulty here, it is councillor McKinley.
Thank you. Coming on the issue of the Central Law Group, which you rightly say councillor Henderson is linked to the Chelmsford CAB, and we will be supporting them, they will be giving advice to people in terms of family, housing and employment matters. So if there's more information that you'd like on that, obviously we can catch up offline and I can give that to you.
See, when the leader fails, you've got the deputy to pick up, so that's exactly right. I didn't know about it, but councillor McKinley did. If you want more information, as you heard, then perhaps we can provide that to you. But clearly that is very much on our radar, which is good. Thank you. Let's move to councillor King.
Thank you, leader. A couple of notes and three short questions. A note in 3.2, the nature of this is restricted, we've got to get money out the door and spend it wisely and well. On the spending it wisely and well, no need to talk to this in detail now, but I think it would be good for assurance to know what kind of measures we've got and what kind of review process. It's good to know you can flex between lines of spend, I'm sure we'll be watching to see this, you get this out, get it out effectively, but as I say, I'd welcome some assurance on that. On some specifics, 3.4 talks, and it's very welcome, as is the rest of the paper, I have to say, and polished and prepared with a real art of the possible in mind, there's a reference to support to relationships with the armed forces in Chelmsford, and given that Colchester has the primary garrison town and sixteen air assault, no disrespect for Chelmsford, has a huge importance, I welcome some assurance that we are looking at what we can do to help and support and assist in Colchester, that would be good to see. And in 3.4, we refer to a welcome allocation of funding for devices to adults with learning disabilities, autism, carers and mental health issues. That's the kind of thing that members more widely will find of interest, as will, of course, the general public. I do wonder how we're going to make that happen, and I do wonder how we might use members to make sure there and elsewhere that we access the kind of support that's described in this comprehensive paper, which as I say are welcome. So there is a two, the point of specifically about access to that particular line item, because that will get down to relationships with people that we would know, but I think there's a wider point, which is yours, leader, about marketing is part of it, but then when you market, what do you do with the information that you get back? How best can we as members plug into the county's bureaucracy and help ensure we get this money out well and wisely spent? Thank you.
Councillor King, thank you very much indeed. So I agree with you completely on that, and of course, making sure we get it to people who need it the most, which is actually the main part of the paper, is critically important. So I will talk to councillor Spence. There will be robust reviews in this to make sure it is done properly, there is no reason in my opinion that we should not be sharing that, because by way of sharing it is also by way of promoting it as well, which is very important, so I'll make sure that happens. Armed Forces, absolutely, like you, I'm from Colchester, so we share a very close relationship with the army there, but of course it's countywide as well. I'm pleased to say, although he's not here, my other deputy is very much involved, councillor Derek Lewis, is very much involved with the Armed Forces, being a reservist himself, and will take charge of the covenant here in Essex. Through that, he'll be working with, certainly Colchester, but other places too, and making sure that that is handled correctly. So he'll be liaising with councillor Spence on this work, because of course our armed services, for all sorts of reasons, are hugely important, but also making sure that they qualify under this scheme as well is particularly important. And indeed, on your last point as well, I will ask councillor Spence to pick up that point directly and to write to you, along with other members as well, because what you say is absolutely correct, and we must make sure that we are assisting everyone as quickly as we can, and making sure this money's getting to people as fast as it possibly can as well. Do any of my other colleagues wish to reply? No? Okay. Yes?
Sorry, thank you, leader. Yeah, just. Sorry, we already review on a monthly basis to government on delivery of these grants, and obviously we have a very robust process, as the leader just said, in place already, and we're happy to provide updates probably through to corporate scrutiny at some point.
Good, thank you very much indeed. Right, let's then move on to councillor Pond.
Thank you, leader, yes, and I'd like to associate myself with the comments others have made about giving thanks to the people who have worked so hard to administer the dispersment of this money from the government, and what I have to say does not undermine that. I have a couple of points, one of which is a little local in relation to paragraph 2.1.2, which is the dispersment of the monies, the places with high tourist and visitor turnover. It struck me that the allocation of 925,000 of this to the Essex Country Parks and the outdoor centres and the Cressing Temple Barns was perhaps a little disproportionate. And the reason I say that is that in my own division, and those of councillor Whitbread, councillor Vance and councillor Scott, we have Epping Forest, which is now administered by the Epping Forest Charity, and that does not seem to be mentioned here. It's not just one district, it carries over several districts and the county boundary. But I would like to see an allocation of this funding towards the Epping Forest Charity and administration, and if I were to contact the superintendent of Epping Forest and put him in touch with councillor Bentley, I hope that that might be a fruitful way of helping them dealing with the huge increase in the number of visitors they have had to the forest, and including the parking measures, which North Essex Parking Partnership have been working with them on. The second point I wanted to make is the allocation of monies for events to assist segregation and Covid measures in village halls, places of worship and so on, to the Rural Community Council of Essex. Excellent organisation, but I represent a largely urban division, as I know several people in the chamber today do, and can the leader give me assurance that the fact that it's the RCCE dispersing it on behalf of the county won't militate against money being spent on these sorts of facilities within our towns? And the last point I wanted to make was the business adaptation grants, the increase in the thresholds there will be very welcome. I know several small retailers and other entrepreneurs in my own division have benefited greatly from these, and I think the increase in the thresholds will be extremely welcome.
Thank you, councillor Pond. Let me answer those questions. On tourism, one of the reasons, of course, we have such excellent facilities in tourism is the maintenance and those we're responsible for. So in order for people to visit them, we've got to make sure they're in tip-top condition. So that will be part of this, making sure we're complying with the measures to make sure that people can come and visit a first-class facility, which of course we have numerous of, both in the private and the public sector within the County of Essex. But certainly, if you want to get the warden of Epping Forest Charity to write to me, I would suggest perhaps in liaison with your other Epping Forest County Council colleagues to do that, I have no problem in doing that, we can certainly have that conversation. On Covid measures, of course, village halls play a vital part in all village community, they are the central hub for many of our villages, and it's important that they are able to function well as we come out of lockdown, and that's why the RCCE is involved in this, and I'd like to thank them, along with other agencies who are helping this come together. I think as councillor Butler said, this really is a Team Essex effort from parish council to organisations, to district and city and borough councils and ourselves as well. We're here for one thing, to improve the lives of people and make their lives better, and we do that as a collective rather than as individuals. And when we do that, it proves to be a success, as we have seen and we will see from this paper as well. If there are urban areas, I'm almost aware of, that could benefit, I think again, it's incumbent upon county councillors to inform us of that and to engage with us on that, to make sure that nothing is left behind and no one is left behind where we can help them. So I would encourage people to write, and your third point, I agree. So thank you very much. Are there any other questions from any other member? Good. In which case, then, colleagues, we need to agree on the paper, the recommendations from 2.1 through to 2.4. Are we agreed? Once more for sound, are we agreed? Excellent, far better. Thank you very much indeed. Right, colleagues, then we move on to the report of decisions taken. Are there any questions? This is for noting, but people are able to ask any questions or comments if they wish. I see none, so the clue here is the word noted, let's have it in volume, is that noted? Well done, everyone, we're doing awfully well here, that's great. Okay, so on the basis of that, colleagues, that concludes the meeting, there being no urgent business that I am certainly aware of, and we then look to the urgent business that I am certainly aware of, and we then look to the next meeting, which will be, as soon as I get there, I will tell you, because electronically it is much faster to do this. The next meeting will be on the 29th of July, you see, that's fantastic. It's like the old days of being in television, someone's talking to your left ear all the time and you know what's going on. So with that, colleagues, there is no urgent business either, I conclude the meeting of the Cabinet. Thank you very much indeed, and thank you to all the officers for making this possible. That was great, thank you.